And they will stop and they will watch you, they won't move anymore. Yeah, what I'm trying to explain something here. Our people, APC was counting on the boycott to read the election in such a way that IPOB could not contest it. Understand this. And the blackmail came that we are doing this thing for selfish reasons. Our elders kept calling me one after the other. And I said, "I want terms and conditions met." And they were met. If I did not call off that very boycott, IPOB would have been dead by now. They would say, you know, they call me boy, they say that boy doesn't listen to anybody. We don't want anybody to fail and they will blame IPOB. That is how our people are. I understand them very well. I spent fifteen years studying the psyche of an Igbo man. Fifteen years. If we did not call it off, we would be dead by now as a movement. As simple as that. We wanted to... If I ask our people to sit at home and visit at home, and on one occasion they're asking me to do something and I refuse, if I ask them, they will say no. That's how they are. We cannot afford to lose their goodwill. You are all the boy because you paid... This is the first meeting I have ever seen, well attended, the whole is full. And they actually paid to come in. I've never heard it before, I'm very embarrassed with you. It's not happened before. I am being honest with you, it has never ever happened before. Will you be here? If you don't follow this message which I preach?
No.
Will anybody force you to come?
No.
That is how we are. Anything I'm doing from today onwards, I will take the views of all of you here into account if I do it. Because I'm not doing it for myself. There are some things you can see which I cannot see. You know, one elder keeps calling you, calling you, calling you, one lot, I don't do, don't do, don't do. And you say that I must do it. You know what they used to say to me? This was what Odukudidi that he failed. They go to IPOB, I say, "Oh, my goodness." I listen to people. I keep saying it on radio Biafra. If I hold a viewpoint and your argument is superior to mine, I will drop my own and I will take your own. And in the fullness of time, three and a half years, you will understand that us calling off the boycott accelerated the coming of Biafra. Thank you very much. The next person is Lawrence Onokuba.
IPOB. Oh, Hamadike. I'm my client. I'm in your regal team when I for two years. To be part of this. From Hades Court to Federal High Court to Appeal Court to Echoas Court, we are seated and will get justice. But my question this evening is, you made mention of we lobbying our MPs for those of all that are in Canada here. And I want to know, because I believe this is a movement. We have to utilize help from everywhere. What efforts can we make to get people into that government? I don't want to call Zoo or anywhere, but to get people into that government that we can work from, from within. If we have enough senators, enough House of Lords, even without lobbying and have governors, I think and I believe, they will work from inside while we work from outside and we will get to where we are going faster. Thank you.
Thank you, barrister. I'm also very happy with your question because it ties in with the last one our brother asked. We wanted to prove to people that your PVC is useless. Also. The moment, the reason why Iba is still there is because IPOB is against him. So I was, I fell on my neck, decided they must put him there. That's the way it goes. When we boycotted and number elections, less than 3% voted. They wrote the figures and said it is 28% or so. Bouharé got 3% of the vote in Abia State in 2015. Jubilee got 28%, is that possible? The zoo is terrible. Nothing works inside the zoo. If you trust your PVC, it... They will just wait for you. You go and do all your campaign, do your voting. They quietly sit down with their intellectuals, the professors, the VCs, and they falsify the figures. And they give it to whoever they like. That's what they do. The same person that you are going to vote in, once they get wind of it, that person has already failed. Or you'll be disqualified. And that's the end of you. We can't anything about it. That is where we say we must destroy the system and build Biafra. Because there's no hope in it. Thank you. The next person is Theo Smogu.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one has actually been answered and that has to do with the elections. And because we are wondering when you made a statement about "they have agreed to our request" and I wanted to highlight those two words, "they" and "agreement". I was going to ask, who are the "they" and what was the agreement? The second question has to do with the membership of IPOB. Right here in Canada, we have so many Igbo organizations. Let me just say that. And these organizations are not automatically members of IPOB. IPOB is a separate organization and individuals are supposed to register individually into this organization. Is there a way that we can change that dynamic whereby the membership of IPOB is made easier for group organizations? And we have done that before with some of these organizations, whereby we have a kind of group membership and affiliation because the people we are looking at here are not just IPOB. You know, understand that. IPOB does it even from, you know, a part of the people here. So how can we increase the membership to include almost every Igbo person or every Biafran? Thank you. First of all, there is an agreement and at the right time, as I keep saying, because you know me, I don't lie. Now I'm across, I don't have any need for it. I will release it. But I don't want to compromise Odukuba. That's what is happening now inside the zoo. There are some things I can't... You have to forgive me, there are some things I cannot make progress. It's classified, I'm not sure for now, but it will be released, I assure you. Hold it against me if I don't, but I will, at the right hand. Regarding membership, I stand to correct you that we are all IPOB, everybody is. Everybody is an indigenous person of Biafra. Collectively, we are indigenous people of... So you end automatic entry into IPOB. But the thing is that there are some things you have to go through when you come into the movement. What it means is that there is this body of nature called IPOB which a group of people are pushing forward, piloting a movement towards freedom. If you want to leave the crowd and come on the one of those at the front, pulling everybody together, it takes something. You have to be under oath. And let me tell you what the oath does. You will not betray us. That is number one. If not for the oath we're under in IPOB, by now our enemies would have destroyed us completely. I'm telling you. But arrest after arrest, killing after killing, we are still marching forward. Because we are under sacred oath to restore Biafra. Or we die restoring Biafra. Anybody, let me put it this way. Anybody who doesn't want to come forward to join IPOB, I have reason to question that person's parenting. Thank you.
The coordinator of Montreal just informed me, they'll be driving all the way back to Montreal, and up to fifteen of them. And so we're looking at time also. The number of persons we could take, they think it's rude working out of my weekend. So just bear that in mind. So one of the ways you can help us is ask a question with just one question, not multiple questions. And at some point, we will have to review the number of people. But for now, I'm gonna call on Kenny. He's the proponent of GBKMFN, a radio station here, to ask his question. He's just a media man.
Thank you very much, it's a privilege to be in this gathering today. I have learnt a lot. My question, I'm gonna be brief. If given the opportunity, will you be willing to sit with Nigeria on a round table for a peaceful discussion, given what they are, the grandfather has gone through?
Thank you. As long as that discussion is to agree where the boundaries will be, then I'm up to it.
Next person is Tina Taker.
IPOB.
One family.
Good afternoon, sir. I'm so privileged to see you today physically. My name is Tina Taker and I'm from English Cameroon. Sir, may you live long. I made Biafra have their independence. I want to say that from a very young age, I remember my grandfather telling me that during the Biafra war, a lot of Igbo people came into English Cameroon and Amazonia and we were by their side. In fact, I grew up, went to school, I have Igbo classmates, we have Igbo market, we have Igbo quarter. My question that is pushing me to talk to you today, sir. When our leaders came to Nigeria to plan, because we realized that all the democracy from these white people is fake democracy. So we decided to take our destiny by force. Because independent, you cannot wait for people to give you independence, you take it by force. That is what we are doing right now. And our own, so stupid, I don't know how to qualify him, animal of a president, his own needs. Because even the most little children know their identity. They are happy to tell you at any second of the day, "I am an Amazonian, I am no longer a Cameroonian." That is what I am missing in our Biafra community. Most of us think that here, in this country, we have used IPOB to take our something, to collect our something in our pocket. It's IPOB. But when you call for a meeting, they are not here. So as African, I am feeling like we are losing it. Mr. Wari, no, no mister. Tifri, what, I don't know. This fool, Ndiyala Usha, he had the audacity to catch our leaders and send them back into Cameroon. Sir, what are you thinking? What are you thinking about Amazonia? I, I, I sometimes I think, I want to know your thoughts, sir. I want to know your thoughts because I know that you are in this field for a long time. I think the first thing we need to do right from home, because from Canada on the TV, I can watch your, your, your speeches, I can be inspired, I know who I am, I know what I stand for. But what are we teaching the new children at home? I think we should start by telling these children who they are. Because I think the media has brainwashed them to forget that these are Biafa children. Biafa has suffered a lot. You people have lost a lot to even have a roomworm attitude. We need to take the independence by force. That is my opinion.
Do I need to respond to that? I think it's very clear, isn't it? I'm actually very happy, maybe I should take permission from my wife to take her with me wherever I go. So she will be speaking to people. When I go, she will talk to our people. We don't know the meaning of freedom, we don't understand that. We think because we fought a war and lost, because of that we should be slaves forever. That was the attitude of the slaves they brought to this part of the world. That is the reason why a black African is the only domesticated animal in the history of humanity. It's the truth, you may not like it, but it's the truth. Only an African man allowed himself to be trained like a farm animal because he lacked dignity and honor to appreciate that some things are better than life itself. My dear sister, I am part and parcel of the Amazonian movement all the way from London. I have spoken to some of your leaders. But I'm going to do a program in Chicago and they're not to be revealed. Somebody mentioned Niger, the South South. They went and duped the Amazonians, took money from them and did nothing. I was expecting them to rise up and campaign for the release of the leaders of Amazonia when Zoo captured them. The mistake that they made, Man Bazoni, was to travel to the northern part of the zoo. They should have come to Biafra land. We have protection would have been provided for them. I have spoken to their leaders, as I said, and they are part and parcel of what we are trying to accomplish. That nations must emerge from the colonial contraptions built by the Europeans. Because some of you don't know one simple logic. When I give you a name, I control you. That was why Muhammad Ali changed his name from Cassius Clay to Muhammad Ali. Most of the very conscious African Americans, when they were freed as slaves, took up African names or took up, not African, but should I say Islamic names. The fact that a white man created Nigeria, listen carefully, makes you his property forever and ever. As long as you preserve that name, Nigerian, you are lower than an animal. Simple logic, common sense. Look at India. After their independence, they changed the names of their cities to what they know it to be. You're telling me that a white man can come from Europe, go to Africa and say, "You, you, 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 from today, your name is Nigerian." And you stupidly and foolishly stand up to say, "I am a proud Nigerian." There's something wrong with your brain. Half of Eurobaf people are in Benettonhood. I said, "Ha." Eurobaf can make a very strong nation. A Eurobaf and a Rudua nation. Why are you fighting and dying for the boundaries drawn by a white man? I'm asking black people. That shows you are inferior. And that is what Biafra has come to change. They may not like it, but it is going to happen. Biafra is going to be free. And Amazonia will be free as well.
My apologies to Ikets Kunti, here actually was an oversight. Can you please come and ask your question?
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
I want to know what you are doing to tell some of our youth to tone down their voices on social media. We have some genuine Eurobaf people purely want us to have our independence. But some of our youth are very, very vulgar. They will attack you when you ask them simple question. They will insult you. I have nieces that are Eurobaf. My senior sister is married and I have a grandmother, she could talk about it. I could not see myself insulting... We should play, apply what is called diplomatic intellectual debate. Fight with Eurobaf intellectually, not being insulting. I've seen two Eurobaf here that are supporting our cause. What are you doing to tell our youth to take it easy?
That's a good question.
Because none of them, they are coming to us.
If you see what they're bombarding with.
You cannot... We, we saw how fire shake.
Oh, my goodness.
Two guys that came to see before the...
I don't know my life since.
We have a genuine Eurobaf.
I see.
What are you playing, tell our youth, excuse?
Oh, my God. That is so...
IPOB.
One family.
That is impressive, I am...
I have to say that maybe they learned it from me. Because we confront fire with even a bigger fire. We know there are good Eurobaf people. I have not said this in public before, but I will say it today here in Canada because you are a distinguished audience, I must say. IPOB attended the last birthday of Pa Ayadebanjo and we gave him a gift. We acknowledge genuine Eurobaf leaders who are consistent. Consistent. We banter sometimes. You know, when Eurobaf, some of them say we are Biafra, you don't expect them to be quiet. They go after them. And I hope that one day we will be very good neighbors with the Eurobaf. Because we have a lot to share together in Odudua and also in Biafra, but not in Nigeria. Are you following me? Yes, not in Nigeria. You know, in the Bible, Abraham said to Lot, "We have the same blood, but your goat is sitting the grass of my sheep and my cow is sitting the grass of your other little cow." So to avoid problem, take care, or you take care, let me go that way. Isn't it? FFK is my, is my in-law. Ayofa Oshere is a darling of Biafra. If you ask who, they will tell you. But this IPOB has been trained to be vicious because we don't know where our enemies are coming from. So the best way of defense is to...
Attack.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Is Dr. Emmanuel Anochir here, please? Dr. Emmanuel Anochir.
During that time, I understand that the House of Rani did not defeat here through the conventional war. But, and that was why they invented divisive myths and that was what we watched them defeated here. And we call it saboteur. Now, they have started a game to use that system to fight there by dividing forces. My question is this. What are you doing or what are we doing to unite each and every group there currently? Because I know that there are many and through what I am seeing in social media, I don't think there is unity among them. So my question is, what are we doing to unite them? Because we are fighting a common enemy and when we are united to fight this common enemy, within couple of weeks, they are defeated. Thank you.
Thank you. He said there are many pro-Biafra groups and I'm sure by next week, maybe might have another four join the existing rounds. There is something that is wrong with us, which we must cure ourselves of. You know, we come from a very competitive culture where if I hear that you're in car importing business, I join. Is that correct? So when people come and say they are praying for Namdekan of Rujan for IPOB, there are people who want people to also pray for them. And if by starting a pro-Biafra group is the way to accomplish that, then so be it. What is the motive of this people? What is the motive of these people? Where are we going to stop? You have four people drinking in a beer pan, they contribute money, maybe 4,600 naira. They see a journalist, but he's a pastor, you know, they don't tell them. And you call the journalist, and you add of the 4,500, you give them 4,000. Say, "Please write press statement, we are calling for this and we are calling for that. Our name is Biafra Liberation Council," and they write. And then you think there is a new pro-Biafra group, also for Nam, for whatever. Are you following what I'm saying? Everybody is important, yes. But IPOB is spiritual. We are uncompromisable. Can you live without discipline? That is the issue. We don't want you to come in, as some people have done, and measure their names on radio Biafra, and the next day, they receive alerts as a type of rubbish. That's why I don't pray for them anymore, because I pray somebody, and they then collect money to start to talk nonsense. There are no pro-Biafra groups, a bunch of people online with fake accounts talking rubbish. If you say you're a pro-Biafra group, who is your leader? Let that leader come to Canada. Let me see people prepared to see him or her. Are you following what I'm saying? If you're a pro-Biafra group, what have you done? Is it pro-Biafra on Facebook? How is it pro-Biafra on Facebook? We are dying on the ground, we are fighting for an X man, on the ground, what have you done? As a pro-Biafra group, I ask. If not to be informed, to the zoo. That is why we are formidable, that is why we are unbreakable, IPOB is unbreakable. When we say One Family, we mean it, IPOB!
One Family!
I don't know whether people read Abas Ango's statement. He said that Nigeria is being fulanized and Islamized. But he did say something, he said, "The only people, the only people that are prepared and seem to be safe is Eastern Nigeria." And why is that? Because we have soldiers on the ground, you people don't know what we do. But every vigilante is less with IPOB people, and when the Fulanists come to any community, there are people there waiting for them. So we are protecting you. The next person is Etel Obi Ezekiah. Etel Obi Ezekiah.
IPOB!
One Family!
IPOB! I'm privileged to see you in person today, Amadike. My question this evening is, like the last speaker said, the previous one, he said, "We have, we have a lot of Versailles to us." And my question is, we have all these governors in the east. What are we going to prove to them so that this cause of Biafra will be achieved? Most of the governors that you have were planted by the Fulani caliphs to serve them. And that move started since 1976. Mbappe was an aberration, they missed him, and more good than. But you see, over the years, they managed to get more good as well. Only Mbappe stood very firm till his death, which is why we should always honor him. He was a good man. He fought in the Biafran war, if you don't know, and became a governor. You can see the love of his people flowing through him. All these charts you are seeing. Go post on them, man. 419 Lagos, 2000 in Lagos. You don't know that before? Or is it Alunme, Amraba, Highway Roba in Benin? These are the people they are bringing for you to be your governor. If he wants to be governor, I can take him to the north. He would do rank, and then they lie down for one smelly idiot, illiterate. And they to bang him, they carry up a ship, we see banging down against, to bang. And they will say he's an evil leader. No, that's how the leaders emerge. Okoro Kunele, red cap, and with a work stick and a corner by the beginning. And he, there you have an Igbo leader. When Fulanis are attacking his village, and you ask him, what do you have to say? He will say, "We should not do anything to disturb the peace." These governors, we are going to do to them exactly what Mossad did to Nazi officers. Go and read the textbook to see what happened to them. There will be no forgiveness. They can do every amount of strategy and sabotage life. They can never stop Biafra from coming. And when Biafra comes, they will not only pay for it, their families will pay, and there will be no pity. Oh, so you think they will kill us at the pole? Massacre us in a van, and then we forgive everybody like that? That's nonsense, we won't forgive anybody.
Amadike, the first time you came during your first missionary journey, there's a man called Uche Zuma, Uche Mami, he hosted you in his house, and you broadcast for seven days. Uche is here today, you ask after him, when we were in the hotel, you said, "Where is my friend Uche?" And he wants to ask you a question, Uche. You've been to Israel?
For a while.
Tianono? Tianono? Yeah.
There are areas that, but I wanted to, I wanted to ensure that it didn't touch us already. Because you have people claiming to be Igbo leaders. They make our trances in Abuja, and there's no repercussion. And what are we doing about that? And how are we going to checkmate these people?
Thank you very much. When I was in Canada last time, he kindly hosted me with his beautiful wife and children. And when I came into Canada, I asked after him. I will answer your question this way. You know Igbo men gossip a lot. It's the truth, I'm being honest with you. Igbo men gossip more than the women. And then... And that is why every meeting, every Igbo meeting in the world headed by a man, they have a faction inside it. They check all the women groups all over the world, they are one and intact. If our mothers were gossiping in 1929, they wouldn't have fought the white man in our back. Uche is a good friend of mine. And I hope he has not fallen victim to gossip. Kamaj, you can answer? Defense fund, defense fund. How many of you here pay defense fund? Raise your hand up.
That's the point, they're asking for defense fund, nobody paid, only few people.
So people are asking me for defense fund in Canada, we are only one person paid.
Actually, we...
My brother, how much do you pay?
I pay 3.50, somebody here paid 4.50 euro. Husband and the wife, 4.50, I pay 3.50 euro.
Who is? Who has paid?
Nobody.
There's two people.
Why you ask defense fund? That's the point.
Oh, say it again. But if you're living about defense fund, you will take the whole reward contributed. They asked me about our transmitter. Uche, my dear brother, he's an Omayan. And I told them about the transmitter, and today the transmitter is in Abuja, with DSS. The reason why those that feed Uche gossip do that is because they want me to reveal the source of our strength that our enemies may know. So if I come here, the way I would normally have behaved before, to say, "Oh, this is our, the first fund, it's in this account, it's this much." Then the zoo will not only look for it, they will calculate the amount of weapons we can buy with it, and they will buy four times that amount to wait for us. Simple, common sense. I don't want to embarrass our people by telling the world how much is the defense fund. He didn't like, to be honest with you, so it's embarrassing to actually say it. And all those people that gossip to you, ask them to produce their receipt with who they paid defense fund, the answer is zero, they never paid. But because we love gossiping. Do you, Uche, do you know why they ask you about the defense fund? Do you know why? They want to discourage you from contributing towards IPOB. If they poison your mind, you stop contributing, this movement will collapse. And then they will say, "Oh, we told you, they cannot get you Biafra." But I know them very well. Because if you mess up in IPOB, I will dismiss you, never to come back. Hi, Esther, you're quarrelled for two weeks and I think three and a half days, I think it's about two weeks. Or eight days, gone and half, actually it's eight days. The same people that leaked, stole my phone, and published the video of me and my beautiful wife, thinking that people will hate me, people then started posting pictures of themselves and their wives, and they're like, "Hey!" Stop listening to gossip. The way people can go, gossip is for people without plan and without any project. We are IPOB. Anything I say I'm going to do, I do it. Do you think Israel will take me seriously if I come out and say to the world, "We have XYZ amount of money in our defense fund"? Do you know how many award cars that Canada has? I'm on Vendo, do you know? No, do you know? I'm on cars, I'm not a foreigner, you don't even know how much, but you want me to tell you how much you have in the defense fund?
The next person is Honorable Achon Humphrey.
No, you have a great no way. Thank you Ezekiel, it's a pleasure having you here, Prince, in Amadikanu. You're a very smart student of history. I know that in every struggle, there are stages. So what is a stage of this struggle at this moment? And you know that the most powerful weapon in war is hunger. I just got back last night from my village, and hunger is driving our people into the camp of our enemy. The youth, they are losing the steam of IPOB struggle because they are hungry. At this stage, I expect IPOB to start formulating economic policies that will not make our youth depend on the crumbs coming from these dirty buffalos. I expect at this moment that IPOB will be doing what we're doing before the Biafran war, refining our oil, having robust healthcare system. At this time, I would also like to suggest, let us bring back tales by Moonlight. The younger generation, they do not understand much about what you're doing. Let us bring back tales by Moonlight, before they go to bed, we'll read them stories, we'll gather around the fire, and tell them what you are doing. This is how this struggle will go to the next level and get to our government, thank you.
He said that people are hungry, and what are we doing about it? My God, I welcome your question, by the way. I went to Israel as part of the negotiations and discussions with certain people in Israel. We are arranging to get our people, our young people, meaning fully employed back home by becoming the food basket of not just Biafra land or the wider zoo that our neighbors, but a lot of West Africa. I went to Israel and negotiated, I came on radio and announced it. Now we need homeland to start doing some very wonderful things. You know what they did? For those asking me about the defense fund, ordinary agriculture. Not the first one, and go to and get a plant, tomatoes. And I know many of these little, little things. OKZ Basu went and visited the Israeli. Okesee Basu went to Israel, that's terrorist. When you can partner with APIA. Are you listening? Because any announcement I make in the public, the zoo will send one of their idiots to go and walk against it. That is why we don't announce everything in public anymore. Understand this very well. And since that time, the Red Desert Basu went to the Israeli embassy, nothing happened, nothing. It's just to spoil it. He asked me the things we are reading right now. And I call it the things of gathering. Not in the Pentecostal church sanctuaries. This very seed that was planted in 2012, 13, 14 picking, through my incarceration and all we've been through, now we are gathering people together to assign roles and duties to go into their next phase. If we can get people here in this hall to lobby, to protest, to rally, to disturb the authorities in this very Canada, then we would have gone a long way. But if you do nothing here, nothing is going to happen. Understand this very well. And regarding Tales by Moonlight, I'm sure that if we are running around the fire and discussing it, they will send the army to burn kids everywhere, that's the problem. Then we have to take care of their kids, or even the kids, we have to bury them, we have to take care of everybody, and it costs money. And then somebody will come on air and ask me, all that dues we are paying, what are we doing with it? But now that people are in prison, nobody is asking me how we're going to bring the money. Nobody is asking me how do we sustain a job for and history to do their work. IPOB.
Next person is Anna Ayo Okore, are you here?
I cannot block.
IPOB, IPOB. We see, we live in see. Everyone of us here today, fans speak in the minds of everyone, admirers of all. People fighting there behind you. My question is this. During your incarceration, my dear brother, and let me make this clear, the fear of Nnamde Kalu Kano is the beginning of wisdom for Buhari. Buhari went, or you went, Buhari there, went on his knees. I believe there must have been some efforts to meet with you. Because I tell you that we are scared, and we are still scared. Was there at any point, and this is a follow-up to a question somebody asked before, about negotiation, was there at any point that, you know, the Buhari or his agents met with you? And if they did, were there conditions that they gave you that you refused? Very straightforward, thank you. Yes, on various occasions, they sent people to me. And I said before I speak to them, I can also give them my conditions, which I know their parents made is not possible for them to meet it, and I did it deliberately, because I don't want to speak to them. Then sent those who are carried to come to me. First to my parents. My father said no, my mother said no. That where I stand is where they stand in life or in death. Then came to prison, I was pro, even from DSS dungeon, the promises came. The vice president, anything you want. You have a very beautiful wife, you better go and enjoy her than being in prison. Anything you want. And I said no. That what I want is a referendum to determine if you people want to be part of the zoo or part of Nigeria, or part of Biafra. Choose one, zoo or Biafra. They said no. And I still tried to make contact. When I came out, I don't know if I've told this story before, actually. And Ahanesa had exacted, I went to see Nia Wodo in his house, we sat down, had lunch together. And I told him what my conditions were, to leave the boycott in a number of states which they couldn't leave. And I said to Wodo very simply, go to Abuja and tell these people that these are what our people are asking for. I said to him, go and bring us something, not for me, for everybody. He went there and started negotiating for the civil position for one of the children. I'm telling you, one of them is fat, ask him. Somebody asked him, but you people are being called to Asorok because of Nnamde Kano, why didn't you tell him that you're going to Asorok? He said it is for Igbo leaders. And once the powers that be knew that he hadn't IPOB support, they just gave him 5 million naira for transport and dismissed him. Had Nia Wodo remain with me. When the governors called me, I told them the same thing in front of Professor Ben Wabese. They said, oh, that Wodo, Saludo, Brema Di Substace, do I want him to come? I said no. Government House. The former DSS director came with his bags of money, in euros, in white sacks, to brighten, ask anybody working in the government house in the morning. I said, no, I don't want to see them. Not because I want to be the only cockerel in now, because of consistency. Can you last? When you are tempted, are you going to succumb? Can you sustain this very effort we're making? So they have come. And I get them my conditions which they can never meet. Open Moray Seaport, open Igbocha Seaport, open Kalapa Seaport, make Enugu an international airport where we can fly to US and come in at wing, build Igbocha, Enugu, Onija, Enugu Express Road, complete Second Niger Bridge. Are these things difficult?
No.
As I'm telling you, this guy asked them in Asorok, he girlfriend, they have the piece of paper I left to them. They ran away. Because some Igbo men were busy gossiping, saying if you allow him, when he finishes fighting Nigeria, he will come here and fight us and kill all of us. That's what they said. And you know another thing they said? They told every Igbo billionaire around the world that nobody should give me one dime. Ask them, that if you give Nnamde Kano money, he will go and buy weapons. That nobody should give me anything. That we are here by the grace of Helder, he not by any of our strength, to be honest with you. Any day we are sitting on the wall, we know. How do you want Canada to regard the Biafran referendum or even USA? The people that the ambassador knows are the governors, or maybe Ahanesa. Do you people not hear that British governments went to Biafran, that one was in prison? Oh my goodness. Their British High Commissioner was touring everywhere. When they wanted to kill me, went to Obi Ovanya and asked him, what do we do to Nnamde Kano? That one said, you can kill me if you want. They went to Akishe, Akishe told him, you can never touch him, if you touch him, business will pop. How many times has the US government been to Enugu? They go to Ahanesa. I saw, I don't want to say. They went to Ahanesa and the governor, they asked them, what do you want? Oh, leave those hospitals, leave them. Miscreants. We want restructuring. What they are asking for is untenable. But the same man said, if there is no restructuring, they will join IPOB to do Biafran, isn't it? Did he complete what he said? Is he doing what he said he's going to do? And you want me to work with these people? I say, everything I do, I say it in the open. The man can make a product work, not gossip. And those that spoke to Uche, I am going to Chicago to broadcast life to the whole world. And tell them they're in trouble. I've told the men, every time they contributed to IPOB, will be announced for the world to hear. Tell them that you know hiding place for gossipers. Even as far as I'm concerned. Because I know what I've committed to this very movement. Not that I'll become Biafran president, no. So that I can take Nembeka and Nabi, came back to the land of his ancestors. So it is that same land that Chukokka, I said, you people must be here. And I'm fighting for Biafran, that we may be free, thank you.
It was just last week that Nnamwodo was responding to 100 billion given to the Flannery Healthmen. And he said, these people go around with their guns killing people. And he didn't do anything. He turned around, homeless civilians that are not covering their face, they're just agitating for a referendum. You call them terrorists. Isn't he a wailers or lamentations? They're just thinking out loud. This man understands that our, the Biafrans are divided. I used to tell someone, I said, the very first day they saw Ohamadike, eastern senators drove into the east. The whole Nigeria nearly had a heart attack. Because this young man here, for the forced tanker, the senators, and all the powers in the east pocket, that's what they don't want to see. And they ended up nearly killing. Because it's the person that is driving the Biafrans to where they should be. But, like you always said, we are resolute, we will continue to march forward. IPOB. IPOB. IPOB.
The next question is coming from Chigazie Agobata, are you here?
IPOB. IPOB. He said, my question is this. When I came here, I was marveled, looking at it, I was getting over here for the purpose of IPOB. And the world Biafran. I want to ask you, if we live here, are you committed? You are asking the supreme leader this question over and over for hours and hours of division. Now I want to throw this question to the floor here, do that to me, everyone. See, let me tell you, I know where I came from, you know my name, only few of you can even know me. On September 2017, when the happening, that happening happened in Ajastet, I can recall my brother over there. Over there. And Timo Kafu. And many, 90, the other. So we gathered together under one IPOB. But that lets me to know we have many IPOB, that we are still talking about today. I want to know this division. Ask Igbo we hesitate. But Igbo we hesitate. But I always do Igbo, ask Igbo we make it, Igbo we hesitate, but Igbo we hesitate. My question is, I asked it before, if we live now, we pay that 20 dollars, it's like it's too much, we pay the 20 dollars, it's like it's too small. Could you believe that this number of people here, we pay 20 dollars every month, just for a sacrifice? Do you know what it will be served for this IPOB in Canada? We went to Ottawa, I have it here. The reason I didn't display it was the time that tackling people on social media. My wife was there. The house was like 300 people. But when the call came to go to Ottawa for protest, everybody disappeared. And we are gathered here, we are IPOB. Where do you belong to? Show example and let's lead, God bless you.
Ohamadike, there's one of us, he has some artistic power. And there's a very unique picture he would like to present to you. That was a picture where you were in court. And I'm calling on Frank, who is to play. IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
One family.
IPOB.
Ohamadike. I'm happy to see you today. I thank you for what you have been doing for us and what you continue doing for us. Keep blessing you. I have something for you. And this thing I'm giving you, when I look at this picture, it inspires me a lot. Thank you so much. Then he will not judge me. What is written there is, the lion of Biafran roars in the courts. You cannot accuse me in the open and try me in secret. You cannot be killing my people and want to try me in secret, you are mad. As we're taking the next question, Ohamadike, there are Ottawa family. It's like four hours from here, that's the capital of Canada. They were not able to be with us yesterday, but they are today. If you don't mind, they'd like to take a piece of you back to Ottawa. Ottawa people, can you please come, please? Go from tap it out.
One family. One family.
One family. Can you people come, go so that the picture will be taken? So that when you go to Ottawa, you tell them you met Ohamadike of his Biafran land. Thank you Ottawa people. God bless you, sexually, when you return, when you go show your families that you shook his hand, the simple man, when you see him, you think he's so aggressive, but he's really a very mellow guy. He told me that everybody that sacrificed the... He told me that everybody that sacrificed to this very struggle must be recognized and that's what we're doing tonight. Listen gentlemen, we're going to be leaving here by eleven. The police crews are there and the security people, we'll be leaving by eleven. So we are very close to the closing time. So, and we will take just very few questions. And I'm going to ask Dr. Chidi Wanyam for two minutes, please, not more than two minutes.
Ohamadike.
This is a candidate from Benugus state.
I already told you how much I have for you. The problem, because I am one of the diehard believers in the Igbo community. We have done our best, we have sacrificed for our community. When I was the president of Nigerian Canadian Association here and we were protesting against, uh, the, 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 the ils that was going on. I went to about three organizations. That were Biafra organizations. And I donated money in all of these places. My problem is this, I want you in the presence of Igbo people here this night to tell us who are the authentic and recognized group that you guys identify with. I want to hear it from your mouth. That's just what I want to see, because every time we step out of here, before tomorrow, before tomorrow, you're going to see people, publicly, I was actually taken out of Nigerian Canadian group today because I was trying to post something and I was the former president and I know why they took me out because of our very people here. So I want you to address our people. Now when you leave, we will know the people that we are, when we are working with them, we know that they are transmitting to you direct. Thank you very much.
Transmission, transmission.
IPOB.
One family.
It is very, very distressing. That's our brother who is the, who was the immediate past president of, um, Zoo Group here. You know, we have the lives of Okora Owasa and all the rest of them. There is also some Okora Owasas in Canada. You will have them everywhere. They are dreaming as they get points. And they know sometime in the past. So they'll be there always. But in terms of, can you stand on, that's our coordinator, the owner of Canada. And where is our, that's the Ontario coordinator as well. There is also our general secretary. If you want to deal with IPOB in Canada, these are the people you'll be dealing with. If you're dealing with them, then you're dealing with me. Anything outside team is not authentic. Please, understand this very, very clearly. And our people who are here. Sometimes it's becoming very, very embarrassing, the way some of us behave, to be honest. Very embarrassing. The progress of our people is the responsibility of each and every one of us here. Sometimes after the libation and the breaking of colonel, some of you don't know that sharing of colonel is an oath. Do you know that?
Yes.
Oh, one look over. People don't understand it. The reason why you give somebody colonel in your house, you break and you eat is that to reassure that person that no harm can befall him or her, that your hands are clean. But we turn our culture upside down, maybe because I grew up in the village. They don't at home. Because if you grew up in the village, you understand the meaning of camaraderie. Working with people and trying to deliver a particular goal or result. Those that grew up in the township, how do they? I want us to turn a new league. Let it be said that IPOB came into Canada and we became a new people. Because the story of Biafra and IPOB will not be complete with what I've seen today. We doubt Canada in it. And that's this, that all of you will participate in it. Some of you think that when Biafra comes, maybe it will be leadership only. Nobody who is a leader in IPOB will serve when Biafra comes. Biafra people will elect people that will serve them. One was asking me, what is your structure? Is your structure, one? He said, what is your structure? We are here to serve you and we are here to also serve Biafra. IPOB.
One family.
We will be moving faster. And there are people, family members that were not in our meeting yesterday, like Prince, like Martin, can you please come forward? Ohamadike, we just take a quick picture with you and then we make personal remarks and then go. While that is going on, I want to remind you, there are people that have been coming to us and we'll be giving them letters for immigration. All of them are successful. Even though Nigerian government said IPOB is a terrorist organization, Canada says no. They do recognize that people are running away from being hurt by oppressive government. What we do not want is people coming to beg us, we are under oath not to abuse those letters that we send to government. If you are not a member of IPOB, we will not give you letter. So if you want to join IPOB, if you're not an IPOB member before, once you set your pool in Canada, you go and register with your closest IPOB office, the nearest province. Are they ready, Martin, are they ready? Yes. Come, come quickly, one second, that's it. Ohamadike, please.